Okay. Should be good. Yep. I see that we're recording. Good evening. The time is now 6:35. I'm Chairman Mike Curry. And I'd like to call this Board of Selectmen Business Meeting to order on this 27th day of May 2020. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
Republic, which stands
Stands
Station under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you, everyone. Okay, I'm just gonna do a quick roll call for who we've got in the room tonight. I see we have Diane Haley, Adam Lamontain, Bob Skozik, Jeff Bennett, Carter Terenzini, Terry Griffiths. Sean Lampert is our TCTV Technician. Holly Young is on, and Jesse Bracco. Jesse Bracco has business tonight in front of the board. Carter? Carter, you gotta go unmute.
Apologies, Jesse's item 5D, the conservation restriction on Royalston Road.
Okay. All right, I'll go through my normal spiel before we begin the meeting. And what I'd like to do, unless any of the, and we do have a quorum tonight. I'd like to move Bob Skozik and Ms. Bracco. I'm assuming Jesse is a woman's name. Sorry.
Yes, you're right, Mike.
All right, thank you. I'll actually add, I'll bump both of them up the list.
Thank you.
Great. Before we begin, I'd like to state for the record that we are not only, well, we're not live streaming difficulties at this time, but we are recording the entire proceeding this evening, except any executive sessions. They will be ready for YouTube and TCTV Cable Station 8 for later viewing. I don't need to ask if anyone from the press is present, as I've already gone through for a roll call. Thank you. As always, our agenda for this evening has been set no later than out, no later than 48 hours out by law, and it's publicly available at the official source for town information, TempletonMA.gov. I know Tom Smith from the Advisory Committee had some issues trying to get to our agenda. And I'm really glad that several people that are on tonight got back to Tom to basically show him where the calendar items are. I think there's one rogue calendar out there that may be on the BOSS page, but we can take care of that. The good news is that all of this information and Jennifer this evening were posted several days out. I'd also like everyone, we are still in a state of emergency for COVID-19. Getting updates through the Code Red system is easy. You can sign up via the website, or you can text the smart, I'm sorry, you can text from your smartphone, the keyword Templeton MA, all one word, to 99411. Let's see, I think, let's see, Zoom rules of the road, please use video when possible. Please mute yourself when not speaking, although TCTV, Sean and I can actually help out with that. If someone's got too much feedback, we'll just make sure that we're unmuting when we can, but otherwise go unmute. It makes it a little bit easier to hear the speaker. If you wish to see the material shared in the screen, like Bob's spreadsheet tonight, please request that of me. I can actually, I have access to all the documentations, and I can put that on the screen for the public's viewing. If you wish to speak, you can raise your hand. You can use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or just politely break in if you're connecting only by telephone. If we were on the live stream, the live stream, people could answer, ask questions, and as we see them come in, or when appropriate, we can answer them. Again, we've got a little bit of a technical difficulty tonight connecting to the YouTube livestream. But the entire meeting will be available. Okay. Moving over to the agenda for this evening. Okay, first, we're gonna have Carter. I don't think there's any introductions for new employees, but I do think that we have some committee appointments this evening.
The, you have some minutes to approve also, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Let's do the minutes first. Within your, within your meeting packet, you should have the meeting minutes from our business meeting on April 22nd.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Diane.
I would like to motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, April 22nd, as written.
Thank you for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. I have a motion and a second to admit the Wednesday, April 22nd, 2020 Business Meeting minutes to the record. Any discussion, corrections, or observations?
The only obser-, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, we can.
Because I can't get on my normal computer. The only observation I had, and I don't know if we need to correct it, was Lori didn't say why she needed the increase, and it makes it look like she said why, and I asked, but I asked why, because she didn't say why. I don't know if you can see it on item D, actionary increase in electrical plumbing and gas, where she explained there was an unexpected boom in real estate building and inspection. Say that. I had asked that, so it makes it look like I was redundant. So I don't know if we need to change it, but I just wanted to make note of it, that that's not how it went down.
Terry, are you talking about item 5D, D as in Delta?
Yes, yeah, where it says, "I" re-
You asked. Okay, I understand what you're saying.
She asked for the increase, and then I had put two and two together because of the increase in housing that Luanne had spoken of, but she had just asked for the increase, and I just asked her what it was used for, and was it because of that? But if you, if you look at the way it was worded, it looked like she explained herself, and I asked anyway.
Terry, I understand what you're saying. I see the explanation at the top, and I also see the fact that you had a question for her on it. I realize that may not be the sequence, but I don't see an issue with it.
Okay, I'm easy. I just wanted to make it noted.
Yeah. Does anyone else have an issue with the way that it's worded, or do you think that it basically captured? Okay. Any other observations or recommended changes or otherwise? Okay, on the, on the motion to admit the April 22nd minutes to the record, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, next, moving into new business under introductions and then committee appointments. We've got committee reappointment. It's for, it's, Peter Haley is already on the EDIC. We just need to reclassify his appointment, as we've had a little bit of a shakeup on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Diane.
I move to confirm the appointment of Peter Haley to the EDIC and reclassify his appointment as real estate expert.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to reconfirm the appointment of Peter Haley, or confirm his appointment, and then to reclassify his appointment as real estate expert. And I believe those appointments last until June 30th. Holly, is that correct?
They normally do. If you'd like to, we could, since we have our annual appointments coming up at the next meeting, maybe we could do it till the next June 30th. That's completely up to you. He's already appointed. It's just reclassifying, so it's up to you.
Okay, well, we have the motion and the second, just part of discussion. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none on the, the motion to confirm Peter Haley to the EDIC and reclassify his appointment as real estate expert. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, we have a vacancy. It's unfortunate that Mrs. Colbert had resigned as the Vice Chair for the EDIC, and we have a vacancy in that position. I'd like, could I take a motion for a nomination for Vice Chair of the EDIC?
I thought it was my understanding that they nominated their own Vice Chairs and Chairs and all of that. Why, why are we doing it?
I believe it's, I believe the
It's per the law.
reason why, yeah, it's in our bylaws that we wind up doing it. Go ahead, Jeff.
It is in the Mass Law. If you look it up for the creation of EDIC, it specifically states that selectmen will pick a chair and a vice chair for the EDIC. That's why we had to go back and revisit it originally, because we didn't do that first time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that Amanda Murray is the Chair of that committee, so the other three are yourself, Glenn Eaton, and Steve Castle.
Okay, and Peter Haley as well, correct?
Peter Haley, Peter Haley, I'm sorry, not Steve Castle.
Okay. Well, I, I would make the motion to appoint Peter Haley as Vice Chair of the EDIC.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Peter Haley as the Vice Chair? As Amanda Murray's Vice? Definitely got some work coming up in that. Really good things happening for Templeton. Not just the committee, but a lot of, a lot of phone calls, a lot of business movement.
That, Mike, did you say Amanda's now Vice Chair, or Amanda's still Chair?
She's still the Chair.
Oh, okay.
Okay, hearing nothing further on the motion to appoint Peter Haley as Vice Chair of the EDIC. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. Okay, we are moving into item 5D as in Delta. Action with, with respect to the approval of conservation restriction on Royalston Road. Mrs. Bracco, you're on in North County Land Trust. Either Carter or Adam want to give an overview of that?
Hey, everyone.
The reason this matters before you, I think it's outlined in the email. When a nonprofit is obtaining the conservation restrictions, they need to submit it for action to the local governing body. Beyond that, I would defer to Jess.
Yeah, so this conservation restriction is for Joanne and Danny Burden, their 17 acres on Royalston Road, and it's part of the Norcross Hill Conservation Project, which conserved over 500 acres, including the Fernal corporation land. So this was funded in part by a landscape partnership grant that required at least 500 acres of property be conserved, contiguous acres. So the Fernal land was 465. The Burdens are conserving 17 acres, and then the town of Templeton is working with DCR to conserve additional acreage to make up 509 acres. So this is the Burden part of that project. They have a conservation restriction, and as Carter just said, conservation restrictions that are held by nonprofits, this one has been held by North County Land Trust as a primary grantee, and Mount Grace Land Trust is a secondary. So because it's been held by land trusts, then we need to have the Select Board approve it and sign off on it. I should say that all other signatories have signed, and it's been notarized, including the Secretary of EOEA, who signed it today. And they're just awaiting Select Board approval, and then we can get the CR recorded.
Thanks, Jess. That would have been my question about signatures, so I don't have any other questions. Any other board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes, go ahead, Carter.
The additional lands that Jess referred to from the town of Templeton, we've already sold one parcel to, to the state. That was about three months ago. The Board took that action, and subsequently, at item J, we'll be asking you to clean up the title on the second parcel, which we can then sell to the state. So that's other property that Jess was speaking of.
Thank you, Carter.
Could I just add that the signatures for the Select Board have to be, it's just you, Michael, as the, as the Chair. Normally, every member of the Select Board will have to sign it, but because all these meetings are remote, and because we're on a very strict time schedule, EOEA has graciously said we only need one signature, but it does need to be an original notarized signature, so once you have signed it, if you approve it tonight, once you do sign that in front of a notary and it's notarized, I would make arrangements with someone, either Holly or Carter or yourself, to pick it up, or it could be mailed to me. Whichever is easiest.
Thanks, Jess. Terry, you had a question?
I just was wondering if there was an overview of the seven-year action plan in Section A, or if there was someplace I could read about it. It says seven-year action plan, Section A, plan to protect or acquire. So that's just this whole project, or is there more to it?
Are you referring to the conservation restriction?
It, it says seven-year action plan, Section A, yes, to protect or acquire Fernal corporation lands, which is the objective of the Norcross Hill Conservation Project. So is there more to it?
Yeah, that is referring to the Templeton Open Space and Recreation Plan, in which it mentions that that is a goal of the town of Templeton. And so in a, in a conservation restriction, we have to point out why, why the conservation of a piece of property is following guidelines and the wishes of the town and the state. So we refer to the Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Thank you.
And Jess, I think you can see, I pulled up the documents, so we could see the context of which Terry's question pointed to.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay. Any other questions, or can entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Diane.
I move to approve the conservation restriction from Danny C. Burden and Julian Burden to North County Land Trust, Inc., and Mount Grace Land Conservation Trust, Inc., in the public interest pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 184, Section 32, and for the Chair to sign.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, and thank you for a second. Any, any further questions? Statements or otherwise? Hearing none on the motion for the approval of the conservation restriction. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry? Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you for coming on tonight, Jess. I will work with Holly. I'm working remote and in town, so I could probably expedite to fall in line with what you were talking about earlier, but I'll certainly work with Holly. I believe she's our notary.
Okay, great. And then will Holly notify me of how I should pick up the, pick up the signed document? I only need the signature page for the Select Board. That's all I need.
Did you want me to email that to you, or do you need the original?
I need the original to, for the registry.
Okay, I could also mail it, whatever works for you.
Mailing it is fine, or I don't know if you're ever in the town office. Sometimes I feel a little more comfortable picking it up.
Okay, okay, I'll let you know as soon as it's all set, and then we can figure that out.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
All right, what I'd like to do now is move item Lima. That's 5L Lima. Mr. Skozik is with us here this evening, and this is action with relative to the adoption of the FY21 Chapter 90 Expenditure Plan. Everybody should have Bob's original memorandum in your packet, and the spreadsheet promised to us was sent out, I believe, earlier this morning. I know I overlooked it. But I do have a copy of it again. Who is briefing this? Either Bob, or who's Carter, or is it, or Adam? Are you giving an overview first, or is it all Bob?
Oh, let me, let me just say that this is following a formula that the Board developed a couple of years ago, as to how much money we wanted to put into the categories. Bob will track them for three or four years. We'll see how that shakes out, and then modify it as appropriate and move forward. So that's the allowed column. That's 100% of the money, but how much was set into each category. Beyond that, I would ask Bob to brief you quickly on how he came to select the projects and what he proposes to do.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. Mike, that, my last name, it's say SO, and then Zick, Sozick, not Skozik.
I'm putting a little bit more spice into it, I'm sorry.
You're working too hard. So as you see, you, Chapter 90, 2021 Expenditure Plan, like Carter mentioned, we started this a couple of years ago, so we can monitor the percentage according to the road study that you had done prior to my arrival, and that's what this is pretty much all based off of. But some roads do deteriorate, because it's so slow-moving in repairs. We have to make some adjustments, but as you see, the balance unspent from last year is approximately 152,000, and that's with 125,000 already taken out for what you're laying project that'll be starting soon. And then we're going to be receiving 334,000 this year from the state, which gives us a balance of 486. And as follows, breakdown, as you can see, we have routine maintenance in Crack Ceilin, Baldwinville Road. The road study showed for the whole road, $89,000, but we set a percentage, and we're going to do $37,500 worth of work. So wherever we leave off on that road, we'll pick that up next year. As you see, I got a list of drainage improvements. The two priority ones is Main Street and North Main. Those, we're gonna add some catch basin and some sub drainage. These are problems every winter with ice buildup in Collins. So if I get those two and have any money left, I will have, go after one of the alternatives as listed. And that, that's all been approved already for MassDOT to go ahead on, and we set a limit of 9,500. This year, I'm not putting anything in for equipment. As I told you when I started, I'd rather see most of the money in the roads, only get what I needed, as small amounts. Godrails, very expensive, but we got to start somewhere. I got area on Patchardsville Road and Harley Hill Road. If there's any leftover out of the $10,000 that's proposed, I will address that. We've got plenty of spots for alternative work. The preventive maintenance, that's 45,000. That's for Sherman and Loveland, I guess, South Road. That'll eat all that up, put a small dent in it and help things out, but got a long ways to go on that road. Overlay, gonna finish Patchardsville Road this year, and that road will be 100%. Main Street, there's a section 1,600 feet, basically from Depot up to how, what is it, the bridge, the Hamlet, Hamlet Road. So there's stretched 1,800 feet. Brooksville is road, it's a bad area, right off of Patriot Road. There's a real bad section there, 600 feet. And if you turn, go up the page to Reclamation, full, full-depth construction. We got Turner Lane, which is well overdue. That'll be a full reclaim with two and a half inches of binder, an inch and a half of top. And that's 2,250 feet. And then Brooks Road is a section that's bad down by Otto River and past the golf course. And that total comes to $195,000. And then, like we explained to you before, we're always going to leave something in for emergency in engineering. As it worked out, as you can see, the Hamlet Mill Bridge, that's where this was a great asset to the town, they able to do. So we're always going to keep something in there. And now, over the years, like Carter said, we're going to monitor this, and we might need to make adjustments on the percentage sheet. That'll, if you haven't already, but you can browse the different sheets, and you'll start seeing a trend, so we might have to move some percentages in a year or two. Okay, we can take some out of full depth reclamation and move it somewhere overlays, if we need more in overlays, but at least we have a trend going now, which we didn't have before.
Thanks, Bob. I really appreciate that. Any questions for Bob?
No, just additional comment, if I may?
Please, Terry, go ahead.
Tell him once again how grateful I am that there is no sand on the road, and that the salt worked out so well that I'm just very grateful and excited that there was no sand on my road this year, and I hope the community would- And I hope the community would recognize the benefit of having the sand as well.
It's saved a lot of damage and time and wear and tear on my equipment. And it's a big improvement, step up for Templeton. I'm glad to see it.
So much.
Well, Bob, I can say, based on your, um, on, uh, the proposal, it, it basically, like Carter was, uh, starting out by saying, it, it went in line with what I believed, uh, you know, the road study, um, discussed. It talked about, um, the synchronization that you and Carter tried to work on. A realistic approach to trying to assess the, the roads out there. I try and get out there and, uh, you know, back when I was on some of the other, um, social media sites, when I, I saw a lot of the, the, uh, the complaints about the road. You're right, the roads, there are some roads out there that are an absolute mess. And, uh, you gotta either, uh, strap in or go slow. And that's what I would advocate for people is, you know, if you know your road needs work, we're work, we're, we're trying, we're getting there. We're, we're getting the equipment, the infrastructure, as Bob just briefed, trying to, uh, to bout, have a balanced, multi-year approach. Uh, but just slow down, um, in the, in, in the meantime. So, yeah, thank you for your proposal. Uh, thanks for your proposal, Bob.
Mike, if I may, uh, like I said, um, I know there's so much work out there, but so little money. So it's, I mean, people that realize that what we have to work with, it's minimal and it's, doesn't get us too far. So this is going to take, um, a very long time to see the light at the end of the tunnel at this rate. But along with that, I, we are working on po holes. And, uh, you know, we're doing our best and, uh, we'll get po holes taken care of and do what we can with this program. And when it's approved and I get the green light from Carter, uh, I need to schedule the, uh, construction company mass broken stone as soon as possible because they feel that the, this year is going to be flooded with work and a lot of work isn't going to be completed because of the COVID-19.
Jeff or Diane, any questions?
Bob, do you feel that the salt does less, less damage to the roads? And about the same, or, I'm just curious?
Uh, the percentage we're using is, is not nearly what Jeff works with. Um, we're a couple of steps down from what they put out for a ratio. It appears, it's definitely less damage. And if you research it and, um, you'll, scientists said sand and salt were more damaging than straight salt. And the treated salt that we're using, it's, it's the minimal of calcium put into it. Um, versus what Jeff uses. I mean, they're, they're hot. Um, they, that's what they want to do is see pavement as soon as you can. But it's, it's working for us and, uh, we, I had a couple of complaints and I did some research and emailed these individuals and, uh, they were, seemed okay with it, so. Other than that, I think of most of the majority of the people in Templeton, I appreciated it.
I know, I appreciated it. I just wondered, you know, if it would be less damage in the long run. Like, it would be more helpful to you?
Yeah, no matter what you use, over time and years, there's things, whether it's sand creating rust on our bridges or minimal assault, you, you're always going to have that corrosion. And then with the time, it'll reach a car off, you know, maintain the bridges. As you can see, we have two bridges, they haven't been maintained. So now we're going to have to pay for it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve your, um, the proposal. So move.
If you accept the Chapter 90 fund proposal?
Diane, could you say that again?
I make a motion to accept the Chapter 90 fund proposal as, as prepared for us.
Okay. Yep, I, I, I had also had heard someone had given a so move the way that I asked. Um, I believe I did hear a second as well.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Um, any further discussion on the, uh, the proposed Chapter 90 Expenditure Plan? Great hearing none on the motion to approve, uh, Bob's, uh, plan as presented. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Bob, thank you very much.
Oh, you're more than welcome. Are you all set for the rest of the meeting, or?
I think so. Carter or Adam, I don't think that Bob's got any, uh, further business on the meeting tonight.
Not that I'm, uh, not that I'm seeing.
Thanks, Bob.
Very good folks. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, just, um, I was going to give her a reminder that we're not live streaming because I am getting a few messages from our, our, our usual fan base on, uh, where, that we're not streaming. Um, but I, I did tell them that we have some technical difficulties and it's beyond our control, however, we are recording. Okay, if I could, uh, jump right back into where we left off, and that is item 5E as in Echo. And that is a common victualer license. Otherwise known as, gotta scroll to it, sorry. Otherwise known as, or it's, I think it's, it's for Gustaf's, the second LLC, but it's called Lee's Hot Dogs. Everybody knows Lee's Hot Dogs.
May I ask Holly if they have everything?
Yes, they do.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Diane.
I move to approve the common victualer's license for Gustaf's, Gustaf's the second LLC DBA Lee's Hot Dog Stand at 31 Central Street, Baldwinville, to expire December 31st, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second? Any discussion on Lee's Hot Dog Stands' victualer license? I like saying it better that way. I looked up how you actually say that word. And, uh, I used it, I think, in one of our last meetings. And it just, it sounds much more horrible if you say it correctly. So I'm, I'm proud of my poor pronunciation of our collective. Yep. You'll have to, that, everyone's going to Google it after the meeting now. Hearing no other smart, uh, snarky remarks, uh, on the, uh, on the motion for the common victualer's license for Lee's Hot Dog Stand. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Lee's Hot Dog Stand.
As a reminder to the public, they are open.
They, they are. I've, uh, seen their, uh, their lobster rolls being advertised on social media. Next item is, uh, 5F as in Foxtrot. Action with regard to the first right of refusal for yet another property at 12 Milbrook Drive. Um, I'm in receipt of, of the letter from David Gasser, uh, the program manager that has, again, offered, um, uh, us as the first right of refusal for the unit at 12 Milbrook Drive in part of the day mill townhouses, townhouses. Um, again, we are working, um, we are working to try and remedy the fact, the, um, we are trying to remedy the, the situation where we're, we're caught. I think this is, since I've been on the board, um, I think this is now the fourth time where we've had to, uh, um, offer the, uh, give a negative or offer of the first right of refusal. It's, um, it's not fun to do, but we are working on, we do have a plan in place. We've done a few different things. We're, we're moving ahead so that we wind up having a housing trust where we can secure these properties. But, uh, that, I really have nothing more to say, uh, on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Diane?
I move to waive the right of first refusal for 12 Milbrook Drive.
Second.
I have a motion and a second? And any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion for the wave, uh, waiver for the first right of refusal for, um, 12 Milbrook Ride, uh, Drive. How do you vote, uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, next item on the, achieving this evening is a community block grant. See, I want to make sure I have the right one. 5G, 5G as in, G as in golf. Uh, CDVG, Community Development Block Grant for Subordination at 90 Michael's Lane. Adam or Carter, any extra explanation or, uh, presentation? Or should I just read into it?
The town received, uh, over a period of years, uh, a number of dollars from the Community Development Block Grant, uh, which it used as loans to various low and moderate income property owners to improve their residential housing. In some instances, those sat behind, uh, first or even second mortgages, uh, or subsequently, uh, the folks have taken on some, uh, new debt. We generally sit behind that debt on our loans. And in this case, um, a new lender is coming in. Uh, and so we need to say, yes, uh, lender, we will release our current position um, and sit behind you. This has been a, a common practice in the four years that I've, uh, been with you. Uh, in some communities, these rehab grants are forgiven. You end up do getting paid, um, over a period of time on a number of them.
Thank you for that, Carter. Um, are there any questions about that? We're basically getting, uh, letting Athol Savings Bank jump in front of us on a lien on the prop, or not a lien, am I using the correct terminology?
Yeah.
Yeah, li, it's, we're just letting Athol Savings Bank jump ahead of us on the lien.
Yes, Carter, what information do we get from Athol Savings Bank?
Um, Holly, do you know if we got anything beyond the documents that we have?
I mean, are they taking out, like, are they getting cash out? Are they, are they in trouble? Are they?
I do have an email, oh, excuse me. I do have an email from Athol Savings, but there's not detailed information in there about that.
We didn't ask them anything?
Uh, we, we can, Diane, I believe it's a standard refinance, but we can, uh, certainly, uh, hold on to this if you'd like.
Well, I mean, normally we would ask questions like, are you getting cash out? Are you, I mean, I don't want to be, go behind a loan where people are in trouble.
Right, leave the reason for the loan, right. I understand this, I think it's about, uh, uh, 40 grand, so like, what, but what is the loan for? Is it for a luxury yacht? Are they, like you said, are they getting cash?
Right, I, I want to know, um, what's the reasoning behind this?
They're putting a new mortgage in place for $49,000, uh, and our 12,000 and change would sit behind that. There's no any.
And a second, and now we're third?
No, this is, uh, we're going to be second behind this first, to our understanding.
So they have a lot of equity in the property?
Um, I would have to go back, and I'm certainly more than happy to do that, uh, to get some additional information for you.
I mean, I hate to make them wait for too long, but I, I have questions about this.
Yep, happy to.
Get all this information upfront?
Yep, hap- happy to go back to them.
Does anybody have, um, objections to me asking these questions?
Um, I just found the email that I had got from Kim Drudy at Athol Savings. And it says that it's not a full refi. It is an equity line of credit and it's going to replace the equity line that the Davis's took out from Gardner Credit Union last year.
So they're replacing one lender with another, it appears.
Diane, did you, did you hear what Carter said, Diane?
Yeah, so they have a mortgage and an equity line, and we're in third place. Which normally I wouldn't approve. But it's kind of too late.
Yeah, they did request a month ago, too, so they've been kind of anxiously awaiting our next meeting.
All right, so then I, okay, I understand now, so I guess I would be fine with that. They're just replacing. I mean, it's too late to say no. I mean, they, they're just replacing one equity line with another equity line.
That's correct.
Um, then, Mr. Chairman, I would make a, um, I would move to approve the subordination agreement to and only to the lien of the note in the mortgage of Athol Savings Bank for Homer and Leslie Davis of 90 Michael's Lane, Baldwinville, and for the town administrator to sign the agreement.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the subordination, um, agreement for 90's Michael, 90 Michael's Lane?
Yes, for future reference. These are questions that this board should be asking.
I have a question to Diane. Would you please explain again the positioning of the town in this? Because this is the first I hear of it, so.
I'm not really sure. If they don't have a first mortgage, then their equity is their first mortgage. And in order for us to be subordinate to that, when you go to the registry, it, when you, um, pay something off, that our, our, our support, our mortgage, quote unquote, moves into first place, but they want their mortgage to be first place, so we have to, they have to lift, you have to lift it and put it into second place. So it's kind of like just a repositioning. But you, you want to make sure when we are subordinating to something, that we are not, like, the borrowers are not in trouble or they're taking a bunch of cash out, or, because then you want to stop.
So the lien is that they owe our town, they owe us money. They owe us money. How did, how did?
Yeah, so they took out a, they took out grant funds. And if they're taking a bunch of cash out of their property, they should just pay us off. I mean, you don't want to be left hanging out there.
Right.
Forever. So please, that's why I'm asking all those questions.
I need to understand it more, and this is the first go around.
We can talk about.
All right.
And I can explain.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Problem.
Any further questions on, uh, the subordination agreement? Okay. Hearing no more discussion on this, the motion for the subordination at 90 Michael's Lane, um, against and only against Homer and Leslie Davis. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
I'm staying.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, we are moving on to item 5H as in, H as in hotel. Carter, I believe you're taking the cares at, uh, description?
Uh, yes, the federal government has two pots of money available to communities to help cover expenses. to help cover expenses which we have incurred and expenses which we have yet to incur. Some of those monies come through the normal FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, grants that you're used to for snow and ice storms, windstorms, and the like. And in those instances, we recover 75 cents on the dollar. Sometimes the state steps in with additional monies. In addition, out of the CARES Act that was adopted, there is a substantial amount of money that came to the state of Massachusetts. Some of that went directly to Boston as a city above $500,000, and some went to Plymouth County as a governmental unit of greater than $500,000. The balance of the monies are available across the state of Massachusetts. Exactly what expense will go in which pot is frankly a little bit murky right now. We're being told that anything we've incurred to date has to go into the FEMA pot. And then there is no definitive date at which point everything moves to the CARES Act. We have reached out, we've given you a list from the state as to what kinds of expenses are eligible. So for instance, the PPE that we've been using and will need to reopen to the public, the protective screens, the glass at the treasure collector's office, the glass at the senior center, protective screens. In order for us to all have good remote access to our server, we've had to put in a VPN, a virtual private network. We have acquired Zoom licenses. The fire department can have folks with basic EMT certifications approve above their normal certification level, but only with additional training for which the chief required a little bit in excess of $5,000. We have had excess cleaning. So all of those items will fall into one of these two pots. This will be fast-moving, and the application needs to be signed by the chief executive officer. The board is collectively the chief executive officer. But in this instance, we've asked that you authorize the chairman to execute the applications for CARES and FEMA monies and to accept any monies which might be forthcoming. I will say, we're doing our very best to be creative. We've reached out to the school district. We don't believe that they're eligible as an independent authority. We've reached out to Light and Water Sewer. We're doing our very best to be as creative as possible. I do not want to mislead you. The amount of monies that are currently targeted for Templeton, we do not believe will get anywhere near that $700-plus thousand number. We'll certainly do our very best to get every dollar that we think we're eligible for, whether it's to benefit a taxpayer, a ratepayer, or the school district.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Diane.
I make a motion to authorize the chair to execute applications for and documents related to the acceptance and expenditure thereof, federal CARES and FEMA monies related to COVID-19 expenditures on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? I'd be happy to put up the document again if anyone needed to see that. I did wind up showing the page that has Templeton's cap. I guess I have a follow-up question to Carter. Do we request the entire $700,000? And per the instructions in that memorandum, just turn back anything that we don't use? Or do we use an estimate?
We will be using an estimate, so for instance, and this is, it's not completely clear yet exactly how this is going to work. And they haven't even opened the portal for the applications just yet. But so let me use as an example, let us say that we want to buy two of the fogging machines. And we have the chemical similar to what the school district used because we want to fog the buildings once a week in the ambulance and the cruisers and the cabs of the Public Works Department. And we estimate how much chemical that will use, and we estimate how many hours. At the end of the day, we're going to only be able to recover exactly what we spend. So my understanding, and this is evolving, is that we will spend against a budget. And I'm afraid that's really the best I can tell you right now. Some of this truly is rapidly evolving, and I'll speak to that when we get to item M. It literally evolves on a day-by-day basis.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. On the motion to authorize the chair to execute applications for and documents related to the acceptance and expenditure thereof, federal CARES and FEMA monies related to COVID-19. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, 5I, I as in India. Action related to the contract award for the ADA Plan through a Community Development Block Grant. In your packet, you'll see what the ADA Plan for compliance is for the town. Adam or Carter, do you want to give it an overview, or I can give the thumbnail sketch?
Just real briefly, because we do not have a current ADA plan recent enough vintage that we could submit it to the state, we were required to agree to undertake the preparation of one. This is a walkthrough of all of our facilities, a review of all of our programs, and an action plan to address any shortfalls that we may have. That preparation, undertaking and preparation of the plan was required as part of the $800,000 Community Development Block Grant that we received last year. They do allow us to use monies from within the grant. We had budgeted, as I recall, $36,000, so this is about $6,000 to $7,000 below budget. And it is a must-do. Decent firm, very few responses. And it's the recommendation of the consultant to move forward with this firm.
Okay. And just to reiterate, the letter came to the Board of Selectmen basically saying, here's the process for your ADA transition plan. And in order to do the assessment, as Carter said, here are all the companies in accordance with law. It was an under $50,000 expenditure. So we went with the lowest bid, which was $26,400, coming under our estimated budget of, it was either 32, or, yeah, it was 32, Carter.
Good.
Yeah. So basically, the recommendation the recommendation from Mr. Sandborn was for Center for Living and Working Inc. Does anyone need any other information concerning the ADA Plan and expenditure of that block grant money?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jeff?
I would just make the rest of the board aware, if they're not. A similar thing, the last time I'm aware of the similar thing that had been done was in 2004. I'm not sure, I don't have it in front of me, how much it cost. There are several binders, and it did all of the town buildings, including the monuments, scalhall, all of that. What would it take and the cost involved to bring everything up to ADA compliance? But that's the last time that I'm aware of it was done, was in 2004, so it's been 16 years.
So in your recommendation, it's like overdue that we would have an update estimate for what it's going to take? Okay, Diane, I'm sorry, I know you were trying to chime in.
I was just going to make the motion.
Okay.
But if other people have questions, I will hold off. Seeing none.
Yep, I think, yeah, I think you're clear.
Okay, I move to award the contract to the Center for Living and Working, Inc. in the amount of $26,400 for the consulting services to prepare a 504 self-assessment and ADA transition plan as described in the town solicitation issued on April 6, 2020, and to authorize the town administrator to negotiate and execute the contract agreement for these services.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions on the contract award for the ADA Transition Plan? Again, that money's coming from a Community Development Block Grant. Hearing none on the motion to award the contract to Center for Living and Working in the amount of $26,400. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry? Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Carter, for for putting that on your plate. Okay, next item on the agenda is item 5J, J as in Juliette. Action relating to the order of taking related to the MAP 3-07 Parcel 58. Get to the right page. Okay, we were in receipt of a memorandum from our town council and the members of the board. You all should have that. This is related to our earlier action with the North County Land Trust. This is, well, Carter or Adam, either of you have a quick synopsis or a presentation, or I can?
Sure, I'll brief this one quickly. As part of the 500 or so acres, there were two parcels of town land that they wanted to acquire, approximately 30 acres, we thought at the time. One parcel has already been sold around $13,500, perhaps three, four months ago. The second parcel had substantial title questions. Couldn't find the chain, the title examiner couldn't find it, we couldn't find it. Finally, the surveyor did find a 1941 tax taking. That said, town council is advising that out of an abundance of caution, part of this is driven by the fact that we can't get into the probate court to find the, to get the files, to get access to this particular file and see the actual documents in front of us. So we would do this notice of taking, no monies are required because we believe we own it. And if anyone subsequently wants to contest that, we would then have to pay them back at that point in time, which is exactly the situation we'd faced previously anyways. Upon completing this, and Tom did send, I believe, yesterday, we forwarded to you two minor changes that had come from the state of Massachusetts upon their review. We would file this notice of taking and then bring back before you the actual sale of the land to the state. Couple acres less than we thought, once the surveyors closed all the corner on the lands. But the sale price will still be about $14,250. So the total sale price will be around $27. And then after we net out legal costs, we'll probably be in the $20,000 range. Hopefully, we can get that completed this fiscal year. If not, it'll be the early part of fiscal '21.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Diane.
I move to adopt the orders of taking for MAP 3-07 Parcel 58 and authorize the town administrator to sign the notice of taking.
Thank you, Diane, for the motion. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Yep. Thank you. I do have a second for that motion. Any further questions, comments, observations? My takeaway, reading through everything, including the amendment that Carter alluded to from email, the minor changes, is driving this is more of a title issue than anything else. So I'm in favor of it.
And people still have three years, even though it was taken from 1941.
Yes, this notice goes on record with the court. Anyone who wishes to challenge our claim to title arising out of that 1941 would have to prove that, and if the court determined that they did have interest in the lands, we would then have to pay a portion thereof, all or a portion thereof, to those persons. It was very similar to what we would have had to have done had we not found this particular deed. But yes, they have three years to prove any interest they might have.
What's the likelihood?
I'd put it somewheres in the 0% to 5% range.
And the town would be, to make sure that it's in concert with the the North County Land Trust in that plan.
Yes, they can't, they can't challenge the taking itself. They would simply go to the court and say, listen, you know, we don't think that the town really owned it. We think that we owned some portion of it, you know, grandfather left it to three grandchildren, that kind of thing. And we would like X percentage of what the town was paid. And then we would pay over to them that portion. Now that we have found the 19, this is what we would have had to have done if we didn't find anything. We would have taken it from owner unknown and put the prior payment on deposit with the court awaiting the clearing period. But now that we found the title, the town council just thinks that we're really safest to do this.
Okay. I've got nothing further. Anyone else? Okay, hearing nothing else on the motion for the order of taking MAP 3-07 Parcel 58. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. Okay, next item up is a request, a transfer of a request between accounts. It looks from the notes that the Veterans Benefits It looks from the notes that the Veterans Benefits requires an additional $5,000. I'm assuming that, again, I see the purpose of the request is for extra funeral costs in FY20. And Sheila needs her account to be plus up. In fact, it said, impacted if request is denied, can't pay the veterans for June. So, this request would go to the advisor.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yep.
The board may recall that Article 1 of the annual town meeting had a supplemental appropriation to the veterans' benefits for $7,500. Had we been able to have the annual town meeting on May 13, as originally proposed, this very well might not be before you tonight.
Right.
But we do need to try to make sure that there's enough there in the beginning of June. There have been those added funerals, we may need to still move forward with some of those dollars in Article 1. But we simply won't get to that annual town meeting and those additional dollars prior to the June 1st payments. So, that is what drives the need for this transfer.
Can a, can a floor amendment be made for that article if we don't need it as much?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Adam has started the voter information guide, and we're looking at that. That one may come right up at the last minute because it has $7,500 for seed money for the Recreation Department's summer camp, which is now not going to happen this summer. So, yes, those amendments can be made right up to the reading of the motion.
Thanks, Carter. Adam, I see that you have your hand up.
Yeah, just really quick, I believe it's 2,500 for the Veterans Services from the, for the ATM.
Oh, okay, in Article 1?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure, yeah. Because I think I just missed. That's all.
Okay. Diane, you're on mute.
By the Veterans Transfer of $5,000 from the Insurance and Benefits Account Department 900 to the Veterans Services Department, Department 500 account for the chair to sign.
Did the board hear the motion? I think, I think most of it got through. Yeah, we heard most of it, we understood what it was for.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for that transfer and a second. Any further discussion?
Does that buy like bags for the coffin, or do you know, like, what did, did they use at the funeral?
That's a good question. Those to pay for the funeral.
Oh, thank.
Yeah, we pay, okay.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
No.
Terry, are you all set?
Yep.
Okay.
No, no questions on where it's coming from, everyone can see it's coming from all benefits. Hey, any other questions? All right, on the motion to adopt the FY20 operating budget by the transfer of 5,000 from Insurance and Benefits Account, Department 900 to the Veterans Services Benefits Department 500 account, and for the chair to sign. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, next on the agenda, we've already gone through the proposed expenditure plan for Chapter 90. And now we are on the last item for new business, which is action related to possible regional COVID-19 community block grants. Carter, Adam, are you taking that one?
I'll take this one again. Last week, we were notified that the state had received approximately $19 million in additional funding for its Community Development Block Grant program that was to be released to non-entitlement communities. That's us, Athol, Winchendon, and all the smaller towns across the Commonwealth. The application was due at that time in two weeks. They have since extended the application deadline by one week. They are now due, if I recall correctly, June 12. The monies can be used for loans to micro businesses, loans and grants. Those are persons with five or fewer employees. And at the end of it, to circle back to a survey we're doing on that, to help with homelessness and to help provide funding for food pantries. I spoke with Peter Sandborn and we both quickly agreed the maximum amount of the grant is $400,000. I spoke with Peter and we both quickly agreed that Templeton, as a standalone applicant, was highly unlikely to be competitive. So, we reached out to Sean Sahasky in Athol. They were putting together an application in partnership with Winchendon. They agreed to add us to that application. And at my request, Sean reached out to Phillipston, which I believe will be part of the application as well. So, we have a nice, compact four-town regional application. Athol and Phillipston had a lot of interrelationship on their ambulance and some other mutual aid things. We share the school district with Phillipston. We share animal control transfer station, some other things with Winchendon. So, I think it's, it's, there's some nice geographic relationship and there's some programmatic relationship as well. I cannot tell you exactly how many dollars the final application will be for. It's being prepared by Athol's consultant. The application of public hearing, if it's not on our webpage, will be in the next day or so. They would be the primary administering. So, you know, we'll be eligible, we've reached out to school district and others trying to get data. And we would ask that you authorize the chair to execute applications for and documents related to the acceptance and expenditures thereof federal CDBG monies related to the COVID-19 rapid application grant in conjunction with regional partners. And those may change over the next week or two.
So, moved.
I have a motion. You can go, we can talk a little bit about the details of it. But thank you, thank you Diane for being very quick to do that. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. So, the motion is basically giving Carter, me, the authority to forward or accept the grant applications through this community block grant application process for small businesses within our, our community.
That's, that's correct. It's for micro businesses, five and under, food pantry assistance, homeless assistance. Sometimes there's a single sheet where the regional partners have to sign. In this case, we're not even sure that that's what DHCD is going to do. So, we're getting this motion just because the application may well be on its way prior to your next meeting.
Okay. And I am, I am looking through my email right now because I know that some of the emails of included some of the Templeton details for how many businesses that we have in town that meet that requirement. I'm just trying to pull that up. Adam, I don't know if you've got that email handy.
So, one of the things that we are trying to put together to help in the application. So, for instance, we have provided the consultant with how many children get what they now call certified aid. The old term was free and reduced lunch. How many children are currently getting meals programs through the school? The program, that program itself is not eligible, but we're hopeful it will be an indicator of the need for nutritional assistance in the community. With respect to the micro business, we really don't have a good handle. We have a list of DBAs, we don't necessarily know how many people are employed and the like. So, we have put up today, I believe, Holly will correct me if I'm wrong. I know she was working on it. A notice to all of the small businesses, micro businesses in town, taking them to a survey monkey that can be filled out, then can help provide us with some of the kinds of data that we need to help boost our competitiveness for this grant.
Yeah.
Would, we would encourage members of the board, folks who watch this, to encourage micro businesses that they know of and to spread the word. The more in data we can get, the more competitive we'll be.
Yep. Terry, just two seconds, I do see your hand up there. The email from Linda Overing had quoted Department of Unemployment Assistance 2018 data lists 128 private establishments employing about 1,000 individuals in Templeton, of which 93 of the businesses were considered service. So, that's just some of the numbers that, in that email thread that I had seen on that. Go ahead.
Then once, if we do get any money, is then is it competitive, what people would have to apply for?
So, the micro business would require an application, yes. And folks who use the food pantry would have to sign a certification that they're within certain income limits for documentation. It's not going to be, you know, we're not going to be doing deep dives on tax or paychecks or any of that kind of thing. But we anticipate the DHCD will require some form of paperwork to be signed by the users. So, you'd come in, you would take a look at the certification, you'd sign it, you would get the assistance from the food pantry and be on your way. As with any program, I anticipate there will be some level of paperwork at each, each step. I, I don't know how many dollars Templeton itself will get out of this process. I can tell you, we would get zero, most likely applying on our own. So, I've kind of taken the view that it's, I'm old enough to remember the coal truck, you know? When pieces of coal would fall off and people would think they were lucky to grab those. I'm kind of taking that point of view on this.
So, right now, they don't have to fill out anything for the food pantry?
Not at present, no. They did up until Jackie took it over, but she's changed some of that.
Terry, they do, they do, when people that come and use the food pantry, they don't fill out data per se, like tracking data, but we certainly are looking for input at the... We're looking for input on like what people are looking for and otherwise. So, they come in and they basically, they fill out an intake form that says, you know, what are you looking for, that kind of thing, that way we can kind of track.
Right.
Otherwise.
Right.
It's like, like I had said in one of our previous meetings, we had external people come to our food pantry and given Jackie kudos on being a very organized operation. But this is exciting, I mean, this participation in this regional block grant is exciting because it opens doors. You know, these little pieces of coal that are falling off the truck are good for people within the community that are most affected by it. That has certainly been my view of this. Large corporation, what I hope that doesn't happen is that, you know, we can only shop at Walmart because only large corporations are going to weather the storm on these things. We want the small businesses that are having some difficulty with income and otherwise to be able to weather the storm, whatever the situation. Everyone's situation is different, but this is yet another feather in the cap of our community to be able to say, here is another way that we can, that we can help out. Maybe not we, but at least administrate, administer this.
The nice thing, if I might, about this regional application is it has taken some work on our part. But the major burden is being carried by the consultant and it would be administered by the town of Athol through that consultant. So, it's a modest level of effort for what I hope would be some reasonable return. And Terry, there is no state or federal largesse without some form of paperwork of some kind at some point along the line.
Where I volunteer, we keep track of articles of clothing or housing or bedding.
Sure.
Just the name, a town, and the items and...
Yep.
And Carter, this is, is it federal money?
This is federal money, which has been through the Community Development Block Grant, which is transferred down to the state, which then administers it to its non-entitled communities through the Massachusetts Small Cities Program.
Okay. Any other questions or issues? All right. On the motion to authorize the town administrator to pursue the application process and for the chair to execute documents related to the COVID-19 Community Development Block Grant on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to accept and expend federal monies related there too. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Holly and I were working behind the scenes to make sure we had the wording squared away. So, I think we're good.
And Mike, if I might, just remind people, if they go to the town's webpage on Town News, the very first item there is called the COVID-19 Micro Business Assistance. It talks to the fact that we're working with the towns of Athol, Winchendon and Phillipston, and provides a link to that survey that we're hoping micro business owners with five or fewer employees could fill out to help us provide some, some added data to support the application.
Great, went over there and I saw it first thing at the top. Hope the survey works just as well. Okay, we are moving off of new business and we are back to old business. Our only old business, oh, I'm sorry, Adam, did you have something?
Yes, there was an amended agenda that was sent out. You actually have N for the special town meeting.
I did know that, I was, I had it going off of my printout so I could track along with, losing myself on the computer screen. So, I was aware that you were going to be briefing a special town meeting this evening.
Yeah, this is pretty simple. This is pretty simple. Whatever reason, the board approved the warrant and one of the articles dropped off. This is a special town meeting for 6:30 and it's going to include the sewer's operating budget. For whatever reason, the sewer capital transferred over, the sewer operating fell off, but we got it. And we just need the board to approve the warrant and this article. And that's it.
Okay, we're just going to take a second to make sure everybody's got what they need, motion and, and otherwise.
I don't have a motion, but I make a motion to approve the warrant for the special town meeting to include the sewer operating budget at 6:30.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions on the special town meeting that will basically occur right, right after or right in conjunction with the annual town meeting? And basically, the special town meeting is just for inclusion of the sewer operating budget?
We'd take the cost of this out of Adam's pay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just also add, if we could have the members of the board, whenever they can, they could show up to the Selectman, Board of Selectmen's office at some point over the weekend. We have it available for the members to sign because we'll need three signatures by Monday morning. So, Carol can get this posted.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to take a second to put it out there. I know we update the, the agenda and otherwise, but I just want to make sure it's part of the public record that we're at least showing what the warrant looks like. Does everyone see that on their screen?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. I just, you know, whether people hit pause or otherwise, I just wanted to make sure that we had, we had what that, the warrant looks like within the meeting. Okay, with that, on the motion that has been seconded for the special town meeting to occur in conjunction with annual town meeting at 6:30 with one article concerning the sewer department operating budget, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Adam. All right. Get back over. Wrong one. Okay, we are moving on to old business. We are revisiting. You've all had some time now to consider the Baldwinville Elementary School proposals. There was an earlier executive session to go over any legal or any items under Mass General Law for strategy for, I believe that's 21A6 and 21A3. So, we have a choice between two proposals. Eden RE of Massachusetts LLC, which is, the primary use would be a cannabis grow in process facility. And the second party is MPC Development LLC, and their primary use is housing, 50-plus market in affordable units. Has everyone had time to consider? Does anyone have any additional questions? Based on any of, any of, any, any details that it may have changed? Actually, I don't think. And if we do go with one of the, out of the two, we do have a supplement motion that we'll have to make based on the real estate situation right there at BES.
Comment I would have was, if we do go with MPZ Development, it still isn't enough housing for our community. It's a good, it's a good thing and I, I, you know, have done some, asked some questions. So, we do need the housing, but it's still, we're still going to need to go with the CTC for the study on.
That is correct. The MPZ, it requires, Carter, it requires block grants?
It requires their condition on $1.2 million of CPA money from the Community Preservation Committee.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Those monies, those monies are there. We've not spent much on community housing and it requires a $6.2 million, if I recall correctly, set aside of tax credits from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. And to Terry's point, we would still want to continue with $17,500 study that we proposed at the annual town meeting because while having these 50 units added, it would be a great addition to the housing stock. Your needs for affordable housing still would have a long ways to go.
Right. I'm going to go for this one. I move to designate MPZ Development LLC as the preferred developer for the Baldwinville Elementary School and to authorize the town administrator, town administrator to negotiate a draft agreement for the sale and development thereof for submission to this board for final approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any further observations on motion to choose MPZ Development LLC?
Good start. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Holly?
I believe we need to declare the additional portion surplus property before this motion is voted on.
Okay, before it? All right. It's all, right, because it's, it's difficult to put that, that egg before the chicken because you're waiting for someone to make the motion on that. And it's almost like saying, you know, saying, letting the cat out of the bag. See if I can keep a hat trick of metaphors. Oh, got it. Okay, I will, I'll, I will table my motion for, to designate MP, MPZ, sorry. And I will further move to declare an additional portion of parcel number 1-4.1-407 surplus properties and available for disposition. Any?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Everyone understands that that's required if we're going to, if we choose to, for MPZ development. Hearing nothing further on the motion to declare additional portion of parcel number 1-4.1-407 surplus properties and available for disposition, how do you vote, Jeff?
No.
Terry? Diane?
I didn't hear how Jeff voted.
Jeff voted no.
No, no voting.
I'm sorry, Diane, could you repeat your vote?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes. Okay, I further move to designate MPZ Development LLC as the preferred developer for the Baldwinville Elementary School and to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a draft agreement for the sale and development thereof for submission to this board for final approval. Terry, you've cut out, but I believe, I believe you did second it?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to designate MPZ Development LLC as the preferred developer.
Discretion?
It was seconded, yep.
No, I would like the public to understand that both companies have risk. And this company has risk in that it has to go through the CTC of over a million dollars and that there are over $6 million in block grants. Although I believe that it can be done, this property probably wouldn't be finished until 2022 due to COVID-19. I think it's a good project to put forward. This town needs affordable housing. And, you know, although we were going to, you know, the only thing that we had available to us last time was cannabis. I've seen, I was on the screening committee and the drawings were superb. The presentation was superb. I think there are some things that still need to be worked out, but I think that putting this back on the tax revenue, water and sewer and electricity and excise tax and is all a major benefit to our community. So, that's where I stand with that. There will be hoops that have to be gone through, but I think that it can all be done with the support of the Templeton community.
I agree. Thank you for that, Diane. I think there are a lot of the same reasons that I think are, are good for this, but it certainly does require some elbow grease to go along with it. But when I think of, that, when I think of that area of Baldwinville and how we, we have other prospects for the cannabis industry, I like the idea of having affordable housing solutions. That's really the word I would like to use. The idea of affordable house solutions rather than problems. So, again, I made, I made that motion. I'm in favor of it. I think it's a good thing. Any further discussion on the proposed motion for MPC development? Okay, hearing nothing further on the motion to designate MPC Development LLC as a preferred development for the Baldwinville Elementary School and for the town administrator to negotiate a draft agreement for the sale and development therefore thereof of, for submission to this board for final approval, how do you vote, Jeff?
No.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you to everybody on the board who put a lot of thought into this. And I know this came up, this, we've been talking about this for a while. I'm glad that people went through a lot of, of thought process for this. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment for a moment?
Go ahead, please.
I just, I just want to remind the board and the community that we understand economic development is critical to broadening the tax base and being able to continue to provide services to the community at an affordable tax rate. And therefore, when we got these two proposals, I could see they were both good quality firms, lots to offer the community. Lori Weida in the Office of Development Services began an effort to compile a variety of alternative properties that we thought might meet the needs of either party, which everyone did not get that. And we were able to spend time this morning with those folks, showed them four parcels, and we believe that they have interest in one of those. And so, we'll continue those efforts. A tip of the hat to Lori for all she's done on it. But we're going to do our very best to make sure that we secure both of these types of development for the community. And I just, I just want folks to be aware of that.
Right. Thank you, Carter. You have one door closing and another opens. I do think that there's, there's some momentum that we're feeling right now. So, it's good. I'm glad we're moving forward with a couple of different opportunities. Okay, that is the end of new business and old business. Time now is 8:21. Actually, that's not bad for how much we have on, on the, the agenda tonight. I'd like to move to board and staff member comments. Would someone like to kick us off with, Carter had his hand up first?
Just, we issued this, it'll be going up on the web the next day or so. If it isn't there already, it's being mailed to all the residents on Orchard Lane. I believe we forwarded it to the board as well. But the construction on Orchard Lane, which is the replacement of water main, substantial upgrading of the drainage in that area, reconstruction of the road kicks off in earnest beginning Monday, June 1, 2020. During the week, some folks may have seen some equipment, supplies and temporary silt fencing of the life, of the like, starting to be installed. In general, construction will be 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM Monday through Friday. There may be periods of time when there are disruptions and when we know it's going to be a major problem. We'll be sure to do a code read out to everybody. But this notice provides the residents with access to the general contractor, all the various phone numbers that are needed, including the Office of the Board of Selectmen, should there just be a question in general. But that $700,000 plus or minus infrastructures being financed by Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant and not the rate payers, there's a little bit of rate paying money in there, but not the rate payers, not the taxpayers. And we're, we're just eager to see that kicked off and completed before the fall.
Thanks, Carter. Okay, Diane, Terry, Jeff? Okay, thank you, Diane.
Sorry, I did have something. I just wanted to say that the virtual memorial program was excellent.
Absolutely. I, I saw a lot of work that went into that. Thank you for, thank you for mentioning that. Terry, you're Jeff?
Yes. I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Pete Casper in between our last meeting and this meeting. He was what I consider one of the old, the old reliable people who used to show up at selectmen's meetings and participate regularly. He joins the long list, unfortunately, of those people who are passing away. Bumpsey Dennis, Ed Hearn, Charlie Perkins, Paul Conce, a lot of them. They used to come and participate in the meetings and, and used to, were there regularly. were there regularly and, and ask questions and took part in the town. He would be another individual greatly missed by myself. Also, concerning the annual town report, I'm wondering how we're gonna, I know it's online, but there are people who either don't do with the internet, don't have access, or actually prefer a hard copy. And since there is a Mass General law that says the selectmen are supposed to make that available to the residents before the annual town meeting, and you used to get it at the election before we switched and made the election happen after town meeting. I'm wondering how will people be able to get their hands on a hard copy before the annual town meeting if the town hall is not opened before the annual town meeting? And my second part with the annual town report, I have looked through it and I noticed again the salaries of all town employees and the salaries of all school employees are not included. And I know the other town in the district publishes those school salaries in their annual town report. So I draw the conclusion that the school district does put that information out. But so far, Templeton has chosen not to include that. It isn't a kind of public money to the people who pay the bills, the taxpayers. It used to always be in there and it's something I think that should return. Lastly, there's a house on Pleasant Street in the Village of Baldwinville that is burned down, it's been burned down for a number of years. I understand that the, the town owns that through land court as of February of this year. I found that out in a roundabout way rather than through the town administration, the town staff. Since the selectmen, according to the bylaw, are responsible for the sale or the disposition of land, property taken by the town for failure of property taxes. One, why would we not notified as a board that the town now owns that house so we could come up with a disposition? A lot of residents have inquired and spoke up about it as a piece of property in that neighborhood that is half burned down. Since the town now owns it, I, I believe that we should put, take some steps so the town could state they took reasonable action to secure that. People go on there, get hurt, animals start going in there, skunks, anything, foxes, porcupine, whatever, some that do carry rabies. We need to take our due diligence, I believe, and have signage, no trespassing, board up whatever windows, doors we need to do. But my main thing is that the board was not made aware that that was sold, that I'm aware of. I checked through my emails and, and didn't see anything in it, other than I emailed the town treasurer and asked about if it was going to land court and I was told it was in tax title. But I was not told that the town actually had possession of that land as of February. I found that out in a couple roundabout ways. And I believe that the town administrator is accountable for that, passing on information to the board. We are the ones responsible ultimately for the disposition of that property. And it, uh, it kind of bothers me that the town is liable and we, as a board, we should be taking steps. If not in, at least in conjunction with the, the Board of Health to, to secure that town property. So anything happens and we don't take steps, it puts us in a more precarious position that we really don't need to be in. And that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, I forgot something. Thanks, Jeff, I appreciate that. So, thank you for notifying about Pete Casper, I appreciate that. Annual town report, how can we get copies? Town report suggestion to make sure that we put salary information from town and school and otherwise in there. And then the house on Pleasant Street. Jeff, that house is like right across from Dunkin' Donuts, is it not? Am I thinking of the right one?
Correct, I believe it was the Oger property.
Okay. Any of the staff that we have on right now, do you want to handle, do you want to take any of these?
Yeah, I'll take some of them. Or Carter, you want to go?
No, no, go, go ahead.
I'm just gonna answer a couple of those. Carter tasked me with, we just acquired that building not too long ago and I have to look into some, some procurement aspect because it was acquired by tax title, so with disposition process, we were actually working on a, a plan for that and we, we just didn't want to make a blanket statement. We wanted to go about this a smart way and, you know, could we have told the board? Absolutely, but we're working on, I have a phone call out to the town administrator, Sean Overenathol. I know he's been handling a couple of these and we just wanted to make sure we do it right. And that's where we're going on the Pleasant Street House. I know it's an eyesore, people are frustrated about it. This took a tough, a while, we're making progress and we are, we are moving forward on that end. In regards to the annual town report, I do, I did get some phone calls and a person stopped by and did pick up annual town report. I'll, I'll just put my number out there because I'm, I'm in the office, 894-2778. If anybody wants, uh, I know we're closed right now, but if anybody calls me, I'll be more than happy to bring one out. That's what we can do for now in the meantime. And with that, we do what we can. And Carter, did you want to add?
Well, I just wanna, I'm just trying to think quickly and we do have two facilities that are still open to the general public. One is the, the police department at the police dispatch window and the other is the fire department. So I think we can get some copies out there and get something out on the web as to how people can secure hard copies. So we can address that in the next day or two, I think, easily.
Great. Thank you for that, guys. Thank you for those responses. On the Pleasant Street House, what is the normal process for that? Actually, I'm not even, I don't want to ask a process question right now. How many properties are in that kind of situation where we've taken, we've, we've earned it from, from land court and we have disposition? Is it a handful? Is it just Pleasant Street or?
No one could tell you definitively. It's something we started working on and we lost the intern. Certainly Pleasant Street and a few others. We'd reached out to our tax council to try to start to move towards an auction. But we'll get you a fuller report over the next week or so. And an approach to try to, we appropriated the $15,000 for tax title. But I think it's a larger issue and Jeff's certainly not out of line to take us to task on the notification once the treasurer became aware of it. But let us get you something over the next week or so.
Before we finish up with any staff comments, Terry, do you have anything?
No, not at the time.
Okay, thanks, Terry. I really just, I'll be very brief. I have been acting as the Public Information Officer. I am the architect and author of the daily status report. For those watching the recording right now, maybe one in particular guffawing at the fact that it's not daily. It did start out daily when we needed to push out a lot of information. And being the PIO for our, both our incident commander and our deputy incident commander and certainly one of the most important people in this community during this crisis was our, our health agent, Lori Witta. We've been trying to put out as much information as possible. We did drop down as items became available and I, I've been making sure that we still put out a good product with that. I do see us transitioning away from those reports. I, I will make sure that the ICS team, I already know they're working on a transition plan, but at least I wanted to be able to address it from the Public Information Officer perspective to say they are still occurring, but the content is about as transparent with the other news outlets at this point. And again, I gotta tip my hat to TCTV for really acting and putting a lot of information out there. That's one of the things that I've been most proud of our community during this crisis is that we work together and have a unified voice for the information that we put out there for the public. I don't think there was a time where we, we did not scramble to get information to the people that requested it, whether it was our jurisdiction or not, we made sure that we had an answer for them. I, I did spend some time polling other communities for what they were offering to their community and that's what makes me proud that we're able to put out as much information as possible. Yes, I know that we had a bump in the road in terms of numbers. I think a lot of communities, I think 20, 27% of the communities in our county sided the way that we did, that we were not going, that we, we chose to look at public health law and wanted to protect our, our residents' information. As those numbers were growing and as the State Department of Public Health further, I think let their lawyers kind of guide, guide them on the acceptable release of information. We then also went along with our county partners. Those have been the most important people during this, this crisis is our county partners. But that's, uh, that's my view from the, as, by way of a COVID-19 update. The state's got a four-phase plan. Golf, golf courses are opening up. I, I would still ask the same thing that our governor asks our public. Please wear a mask. Please observe social distancing and your six feet perimeter and please wash your hands. Thank you to the community for keeping our numbers relatively low with our population. I know that the numbers look higher when you're comparing them to other communities around us, but you've just got to take a look at, at what drives a lot of those numbers. And that's all I have this evening. I do believe that we are requesting you go into executive session this evening. Any staff member comments? Okay. The, I will make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law 30A subsection 21A2, strategy and negotiations with non-union personnel. We will not be coming back into open session and there will be, like, there will likely be no vote. So this would be the end of the public meeting.
Still move.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Okay. Again, to explain, we are going into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 21A-2. We are not coming back to public session and there will be no vote. Thank you for, I know that we had some technical difficulties tonight. We did get the recording in accordance with our amended open meeting law and that will be available soon. I did see, while we were in our meeting, TCTV did make notifications that they were experiencing technical difficulties, so anyone looking for our live stream at least saw TCTV's notice. Thank you and I'll, that I, oh, I didn't, I didn't do a vote. On the vote for moving into executive committee, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry? Diane? Can I vote yes as well? Okay, we are moving into executive session, good night, folks.
See you on the docks.